Good evening. I would like to call the January 21st, 2014 City Council meeting order. We'll call. Alderman Nozio.
Here, President.
Alderman Beedlin. Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
All present, may I say.
All present. This evening, we're having a problem with our microphone system and intercoms, so please be patient. invocation, please.
Bishop Coburn. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We ask you a blessing upon our mayor, upon this alderman, and upon our city as a whole. I pray for the Public Works Department, especially in this season. Our senior citizens, let's watch out for all of these blessings we ask in the name of the God of all creation. Amen.
Amen.
A blessed legion's official flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we'll be no mayor, a mayor's comment this evening. It's time. Anyone who wants to discuss any item on the agenda, please step forward. No one? Next is a minutes. Motion to approve the January 6th, 2014 minutes. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Conkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, proclamation, presentation, appointments. We have guests here from Shimer College. I met with them this afternoon. Very pleasant, very pleasant meeting, and they would like to make a presentation to the Waukegan City Council. If you please step forward.
Good evening, and thank you so much for welcoming me. My name's Susan Henking. I'm the current president of Shimer College, and I had the joy today of visiting Waukegan for the first time since I was a graduate student in Chicago in 1982, and I can tell you, you've done your job well. It is a very different city in some very positive ways, so congratulations on that. I feel very privileged to be here with you today to speak on behalf of an institution that in some ways you know better than I do. I'm a year and a half into a presidency of an institution founded 160 years ago that spent 35 years in Waukegan as a result of the generosity of Waukegan and its then leadership. Shimer College is today, it really is, it exists at all in large measure because of the generosity of spirit of Waukegan, Illinois. And so, we're pleased to join you today. Our motto is not to be served, but to serve, and yet, you are the ones who served us so well. With me are a variety of other Shimerians, some faculty, some former students, a current student who is himself a member of our Board of Trustees, former President Don Moon, Mark Hoffman, who is our Director of External Relations, many people who've taught me about the value of what occurred here in the years that Shimer lived down the street from where we stand tonight. Many of them lived and learned amongst you, and in fact, today's students live and learn in large measure because of you. We are because you were and are there for us. Many others join us today in spirit, including Waukegan resident Dave Kocel, who I spoke with in Detroit recently, who spoke about the fact that as a Waukegan citizen, he met Shimer here and met his future here. Our current trustees, Chris Vaughn and Rebecca Sundin, both of whom were Waukegan students and speak of Waukegan as the place that changed their lives. You all know this in many ways better than I do. It was almost exactly at this time, over 35 years ago, in late January of 1979, that Shimer College completed its move to Waukegan courtesy of a cordial invitation from then-Waukegan Mayor Bill Morris to relocate the college. I was a much younger person, many miles south during that same blizzard of 1979 that left northern Illinois with large amounts of ice and snow, and until recently, I would say some of the worst weather I'd ever seen. And at that point, Shimer left its ancestral home in Mount Carroll, just east of the Mississippi River, where it had been a fixture for 125 years, and prepared to move 120 miles eastward to Waukegan. Students and faculty members spent late December not Christmas shopping, but packing furniture and files and library books, putting them on grain trucks, transporting them across the state through mounds of snow and whipping winds to the college's new home. As it did so, it risked a lot. It also learned a lot from a new place and what that meant for the education of young and not-so-young men and women. Today, Shimer recognizes the place that nurtured us across those 35 years by announcing a scholarship, the Pride of Place Scholarship, to be awarded to admitted students from Waukegan. This scholarship, and I'll read you a description of the scholarship, comes to be in large measure because we recognize that while we have been in Mount Carroll, we have been in Waukegan, and we are in Chicago, we are the same Shimer, and our today's students and tomorrow's students benefit from the legacy of Waukegan in our educational mission and in everything we do. So, we should welcome Waukegan citizens to our midst in a quite literal way through this scholarship. I want to say briefly three stories I have about Waukegan that taught me what it means to be the leader of this place that frankly, I'd never heard of until I took the job. First, I met, as I mentioned, Dave Kocel in Detroit. I had no idea I was going to the Detroit Auto Show. I wasn't intending to, but I had dinner with Dave and Sharon, and he told me what it meant to him to live above the printing shop that was printing Shimer's materials, make a decision to go to Shimer, and learn something that he uttered as follows. "I learned I could." And that was all he said. "I learned I could." Today, he teaches young men and women at a university in Detroit that they too can. I want to talk also, very briefly, about a very odd experience I have that I think characterizes our shared relationship. I was in Dallas to celebrate some new endowment that came to Shimer, and I was taking a rental car shuttle. It happened to be extremely cold in Waukegan and Chicago. It was about a month ago. I was in Dallas. You were probably here. So, on the rental shuttle, there's four people, and we're gossiping about how glad we are to be in Dallas as opposed to somewhere where it was cold. And this young man says to me, "I'm so glad I don't live in Waukegan anymore. I got out," he meant he got out after Christmas on a flight and was one of the few who did the day before. And I said to him, "So, where are you from?" And he said, "I'm from Waukegan." And I went to a tiny little college there. I said, "Oh, my God. Didn't you go to Shimer?" He said, "Yes." And Shimer and Waukegan changed my life. It's why I go there for the holidays each year. The third story I want to tell you has to do with something very different. It has to do with the fact that when we look across Shimer's citizens today, Shimer students today, they're an incredibly diverse group of human beings. They are like Waukegan, a group that's diverse in socioeconomic background, that's diverse in racial/ethnic background, that's diverse politically, and that is diverse in terms of being rural versus urban. They are a group of people who I believe would do Waukegan proud, and a group of people that would love to have a few more Waukegans reminding them of the importance of this location. So, it's our pride and joy to announce today the Waukegan Pride of Place Scholarship. And I'm going to read you the declaration. In its 160-year history, Shimer College has been shaped by the locations in which it has made its home. The mayor and the residents of Waukegan welcomed Shimer in 1978 to a beautiful campus of Victorian homes that reflected and augmented the value of community so central to our mission. It was in Waukegan that the Assembly, the body of shared governance in which every member of the community has their voice heard, became part of the Shimer experience. At Shimer, we recognize the place matters. Although we are today located in Chicago and were founded in Mount Carroll, our history with Waukegan has had an irrefutable impact upon our traditions and our campus culture. In honor of that impact, to express our deepest gratitude and to celebrate our ongoing relationship to the city of Waukegan, we are proud to announce the Pride of Place Scholarship, Waukegan, which will go to admitted students who come from Waukegan area high schools. Thank you so much for everything. I speak on behalf of students, staff, and faculty who learned so much and learned to love Waukegan across those 35 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Susan, we have a resolution, several resolutions that we prepared for you and the members of Shimer College. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the resolutions? Resolution, Shimer College. Pride of Place. Whereas Shimer College was founded by Francis Wood and Cinderella Gregory in Mount Carroll, Illinois in 1853, and was originally called Mount Carroll Seminary. And whereas Shimer College moved to Waukegan in 1978 and continued to focus on their great books curriculum, and whereas Shimer College has made a lasting impact on our community and has also served to inspire many notable alumni that include poets, authors, political theorists, experimental artists, and computing pioneers. And whereas Shimer is now located on the campus of the Illinois Institute of Technology, which is in the Bronzeville neighborhood in Chicago, and has been there since 2006. Whereas Shimer College is still firmly committed to the notion that the education ought to be radical, rigorous, and unending. And whereas the staff, faculty, and students of Shimer College do not want to forget their rich history and wish to continue the relationship with our community. Whereas Shimer College has officially announced their Pride of Place Scholarship for Waukegan students as a means to help us stay connected and to also for us both to remain dangerously optimistic. Now therefore, we have resolved that a suitable imbibed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the members of Shimer College attending a city council meeting dated this January 21st, 2014. Signed, Wayne Motley, Mayor, Artis Yancy, City Clerk.
Yes, because we are always a "we" and not an "I," I'd ask that the Shimerians present, please join me in accepting this proclamation on our behalf.
Well, honestly, we're very thankful that you've come and helped this period, to give back this period. Some lucky student from our high school will take advantage of your great education. So, on behalf of the City of Waukegan, the Alderman, and myself, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, now it's photo time. Okay. Everyone, on that side, too.
First, Mark. Right, right over here.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was an extreme gesture of kindness, and I can assure you, we appreciate that immensely. Next item on the agenda, motion to approve the January 6th, 2000, I'm sorry. Committee reports. Finance committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the agenda is to approve a motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement by and between the Illinois Office of the Comptroller, IOC, and the city of Waukegan regarding access to the comptroller's local depth recovery program, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Passes, Mayor.
Item B, to approve a motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement by and between the Board of Education of Waukegan Community Unit, School District Number 60, and the city of Waukegan for public safety services provided during the 2013-14 school year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
I vote aye, but I have a question. Is it supposed to be 2013-14 or 2014-15?
It's 13, I'm sorry, it was my mistake. It's 13-14.
It is 13-14.
13-14, yes.
It's for the school year, correct.
My mistake, sorry.
This year, not next year. Okay.
Next is the Public Works. Alderman Nozio, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. First item, item eight. Approving motion to authorize the proper city officials permission to extend the current mowing contract from May 1st, 2014 until April 30th, 2016 with GNS services from Waukegan, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $114,966 for each season. Funds for this service are available on line 100-910-624410, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nozio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Item B, approving motion to authorize the proper city officials permission to make parking on Stewart Avenue between Sharon Road and Palmer Street alternate parking, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nozio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. Item C is just a motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specification advertised for bids for sewer root control, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nozio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item D, approving motion to authorize the proper city officials permission to reduce the letter of credit number 55106590 for Waukegan Delaney Industrial LLC for completed improvements, and I so bid, or so move.
Motion by Alderman Nozio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio. Alderman Beedlin. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item E, approving motion to authorize the proper city officials permission to reject the bid of continental construction of Evanston, Illinois due to their inability to produce the proper documents to get the project started and completed in the fall of 2013. The Public Works Department would like to rebid this project to be completed spring of 2014 before the end of the fiscal year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nozio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. And the last item, item F, approving motion to recommend the city council authorize the appointment of Tom Haggerty to the Board of Directors of the Solid Waste Agency, better known as SWALC, Ovay County, as presented, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Nozio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Alderman Nozio. Alderman Beedlin. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
That concludes it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Valco. Thank you, Mayor. We have one item that we didn't get to last council meeting. It's the approval of a motion for a text amendment to Section 3.7-3 of the Waukegan Zoning Ordinance regarding zoning letters and Section 3.7-4 regarding zoning verification, and it's off of zoning calendar number 2414, and I so move. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Passes. Under old business, motion approved to authorize the proper city officials to draft an ordinance to effect handicap parking on the west side of 229 South Avenue and to install one, not two, handicap parking spaces. Is that correct? Alderman Cunningham?
And that's going to be a change, Your Honor, as opposed to 229, it's still the same address.
Okay.
But we need to go on M.L. King side, the east side of M.L. King.
Do you have the address?
Yeah.
What's the address?
The same address.
Okay.
It's on the corner. We're going to go M.L. King side versus that South Avenue side.
Okay. This is the draft, so the draft will be 229 Martinson King, and it'll be one handicap spot, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedlin. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next is a presentation by Treasurer John Schwab.
Thank you, Mayor. This is working? Okay. I hope to report on recorded letter of credit for Yeoman Creek Remediation Group that's been costing the city $25,000 a year to hold it. The city's finance has improved over the last few years, and I expect relief from that financial burden. But the January 8th meeting, which I expected to report on, had been postponed to January 23rd. I hope to update the city council in the near future. And also, I'll have the opportunity, I just want to personally thank Deputy Treasurer Cindy Teckamp. She has saved me well for the last four and a half years in the office and served the office well with dedication and professionalism. And at this time, I also want to welcome Joan Westfall to my office as Deputy Treasurer. Joan has currently been working in the Finance Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Treasurer Schwab. New business. Item A, approval of payroll dated January 10th, 2014 in the amount of $1,409,363.52. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated January 21st, 2014 in the amount of $955,280.90. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedlin.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin. Aye. Item C, monthly treasury report for December 2013. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest, to accept and place on file. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, ordinance, supplemental appropriation law to the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year, May 1, 2013 to April 30, 2014, passed by City Council of the City of Waukegan on the 20th day of May 2013 as ordinance number 13013. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio. Alderman Beedlin. Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin. Passes. All is time, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Nozio.
Yeah, just one, a couple things, really just to thank all the people at Public Works. I've spent a lot of time on the phone, a lot of time up there. I mean, with all the plowing and the water main breaks and this and that, and not doing it in very, very nice conditions, I'd just like to thank all everyone up there, including Tom and Pat and everybody that works up there for getting on that. We got a huge water main break on Grand Avenue Friday night, colder, and all get out, they got to go out there and fix it in the middle of the night. Get down into a hole, and they find out they got to take care of a storm sewer, and it's just a lot of, a lot of things going on, and I'd just like to thank those guys for all their, their work that they've done. Thank you.
Get over to Alderman Nozio, Seth. It's just to step outside for about 15 minutes, you get to feel how cold it is out. Imagine yourself down in a hole with water, sometimes no gloves on because you have to handle tools. It can be very brutal, and I have an appreciation of that. I would like to thank once again our two code compliance officers, Tony Puvall and Miguel Rivera, and our neighborhood, fourth board neighborhood police officer, Officer Bressler. They're working very nicely together, trying to maintain community standards in the ward, keeping it livable. And I'd like to close with this. The polar vortex. Never heard of that before. It's actually officially called the circumpolar vortex, but these climate scientists, you know, they like to scare the public. If you remember in years past, when we'd get these cold blasts, the weatherman used to refer to it as the Alberta Clipper. But now, since climate change has taken hold, we have to sound a lot more serious about it, so still the Alberta Clipper to me. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
No comment tonight, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
I'd like to also compliment the Public Works. They've been doing a great job. I was out west today, saw the work that they did with the streets and plowing, and looks really good. I don't know, I guess I, I don't know if they mentioned kudos that day to, to the mayor and city hall, the day that it was, I guess, what, forty below zero, you had city hall open, you know, and that was, that was a great.
Great night.
That was great. And when I was sipping on some pina coladas, I read that in the, in my, in my email, so I mean, you know, kudos to the mayor and the people involved in that decision. That was a great call. I was being proactive, no doubt about it. I also want to announce the tenth annual Little Fort Lions, Bob Abbott and Martin Guste, Steak and Egg Breakfast, which will be held Sunday, February the ninth, from eight AM to one PM at the Waukegan Yacht Club. Obviously, this goes towards helping out in the community. It helps children with glass, needing glasses, hearing aids, batteries, library, books, and supplies for elementary and junior high students, awards and scholarships for more Waukegan High School students, the holiday party that we annually do over at the Sunset House for the hearing and visually impaired, and diabetes and drug awareness. So, you know, this is a great cause and some great food that we always have every year over at the Yacht Club. So if anyone's interested in any tickets, they can either get ahold of me or, or get ahold of my fellow lion, Frank Kozmikus. And again, it's a great cause, a great organization, the Lions Club, here in the city of Waukegan. Thank you very much.
I forgot to mention, Alderman Cunningham goes, Public Works now has a Facebook page and encourages people to like it on there so you can follow it, update, water main breaks, the patching, something's going on in a specific area, so you could about skin it up there so that people are informed about what's going on, how down the water main breaks, the patch, the practice, and the board. But it's just a way to try to communicate better with the public, and I'd like to thank David Motley for getting that up and running. Thank you, David.
I'd like to echo the comments from, I think, the rest of the aldermen regarding our frontline responders, our Public Works, police, all, and code enforcement working together. So just keep that up. We've had some really tough weather over the last two or three weeks. I just, I wanted to stop, used to say, stops rain, rain go away, now I want to say, snow, snow go away. But kudos to Tom Hagerty and his team and the rest of our, our first responders. That's it, thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Quickly, same thing, Public Works doing a great job on the streets, water, keeping the water mains, fixing them. I feel sorry for you. If it happens in the summertime, you're probably grateful that you get to cool off, but in the wintertime, it's, I'm sure it's no picnic. And please, everybody, it is cold again. If you have friends, neighbors that might need to be looked after, make sure they're okay, go knock on a door. Other than that, thank you, Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you. Just information for the aldermen, I've made some promotions in the city. I will bring, bring my request to the Labor Relations Board on the twenty-seventh. I intend to promote Dave Marion to the position of Building Commissioner, and I intend to promote David Motley to the position of Director of Communications along with his responsibilities as Marketing Director and Public Relations Manager. So that's information, motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Audience time, I'm sorry.
Audience time, adjourn discussion, Chris Blanks.
Black abolition movement for the mine and community abolitionists. This month, we pay tribute to a great man who stood for justice and equality by the name of Dr. Martin Luther King. I thought I would hear mention of that today. But anyway, I thought it would be a good thing to mention as I go into my comments today. In my inquiry, perhaps, hopefully, Mayor, you could shed some light on what is the status at this time of the officers in regarding to the Garcia family and the case that took place with them, the brutality case and the lawsuit that was brought about.
You can't comment on the case, it's an allegation, and Chris, you shouldn't be commenting on it either. It's in the court system now.
Yeah, well, somebody will come in. I can come in on it because the case is not dealing with me. But I'm not surprised that we don't want to comment on it, no more than I'm surprised that, no more than I'm surprised that when we had some of you who was willing to ride around the city with no front license plates.
Here we go.
While citizens of the city was being ticketed, so I'm not surprised of that. No more than I'm surprised of the total blatant disrespect of Ms. Eunice Sanders, how she was disrespectfully dismissed. Dismissed. No more than I'm surprised at how the city clerk was disrespected when you went over her head, over his head, to fire somebody out of his department without any regards to him. That was disrespectful, so I'm not surprised. But in this month in which we celebrating history, why don't some of you women run for mayor? I think this city is due for a fresh air, a breath of fresh air. But anyway, but I just want to say, you know, none of that really surprises me at all. But, and you as aldermen, you all should be willing to say something about this situation. Perhaps, I know you can't, but I see Alderman Beadlin, he didn't have no problem saying anything last month, last city council meeting, when he was talking about how he was riding through the community on his tricycle with his radio in his back pocket, which has absolutely nothing to do with young citizens being beaten, brutalized in the police department. How you ride through the community on your tricycle with your radio in your back pocket has nothing to do with young people being beaten in the community.
Mr. Blanks, if you give me a second, please.
Say it again.
Pursuant to two point six five point one of the Code of Conduct that we, that we handle at the city council meetings.
Uh huh.
Pursuant to statute and ordinance.
Yes.
You're not allowed to make any personal attacks, you're not allowed to make any rude remarks, you're not allowed to attack individuals.
Okay.
Which is what I believe you're in the area at this point in time.
Uh huh.
So if you wish to address in a proper, respectful manner.
Yes.
The council and the citizens at the meeting, please proceed. If you wish to continue to attack.
Okay.
And defame and, and be rude to individuals of this administration and the police department.
Uh huh.
Then I would ask you to please have a seat.
Okay. I appreciate those comments, and I will only ask on behalf of the citizens, that as you asking me to be respectful towards you all and not to insult you all, I ask on behalf of the citizens that you show the same mutual respect towards our citizens to make sure that they are treated with fairness, justice, equality, without having to be battered, abused, or insulted. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here representing Waukegan Main Street. My name is Jamie O'Meara. I live at thirteen eighteen Chestnut Street. First of all, I'd like to comment on art walk this last Saturday. We had a great turnout. Interestingly enough, it was because we got regional and national mention of our art walk. Regionally, we were rated the number five, number one out of five top things to do in the Chicago area by Crane Chicago Business. Nationally, we were mentioned in a Wall Street Journal article regarding the Dandelion Gallery collaboration with Swing Line, the Swing Line Collective. Hey Milton, we found your stapler. So we are getting out there in the public eye, regionally and nationally, which is fantastic. Also, this weekend on Friday, Seventeen North celebrated their first anniversary, and they did this by unveiling their new game room. If you have not been by, I would recommend you go by, they have great pool tables, foosball, darts, they're intending to start leagues in these, they also have some video games. Coming up in the next few weeks, Clockwise Theater has their grand opening of their new play, Doubting Thomas. It starts this Friday. Twelve performances through February sixteenth, it's a great deal, twenty dollars for live professional theater. If you live on the west side of town, fifteen minutes from home, you can't beat that. On Sunday, January twenty-sixth, in our downtown here, the Waukegan Public Library, our award-winning library, will be hosting a bilingual workshop for college financial aid. That's, for those of you who have college-age kids, that's the FAFSA forum, which is extremely confusing, and they will be having a workshop on that. On January twenty-sixth, Sunday, the Genesee Theater is showing, is hosting the Naryev State Ballet, Sleeping Beauty, for those who like that. On January thirty-first, you can celebrate the Year of the Horse at Franz Kitchen, thirty North Genesee. I do have to mention that last year, there was standing room only, so make your reservations. And last but not least, for Waukegan Main Street, our upcoming fundraiser, Mardi Gras, our annual fundraiser, this is our largest fundraiser of the year. As you all know, we are not-for-profit, we rely on donations, grants, memberships, and our own fundraising to fulfill our mission. This Mardi Gras will be on Saturday, February twenty-second, from six to eleven, at Glen Flora Country Club. Everyone is invited, I believe you would have all gotten invitations, if not, please see me. And I'd also like to mention that there are sponsorship opportunities available, and tickets can be purchased online now at waukegammainstreet.org, or you can call the office at eight four seven six two three six six five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman May to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.